... meeting of March 26, 2019. And this is being brought to you by Area 58 Community Access Media. And if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. All right. First on the agenda tonight is the application of Cranberry Point Energy Storage LLC requesting a special permit in site plan review pursuant to sections 2230 of the Carver zoning bylaw. It's located at 31 Ria Main Street in Carver, Mass. Assesses maps 6110-0-R and 7-0-I to allow 150 megawatt battery storage facility in a residential agricultural district. Steven, what do you have?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, at our last meeting, the board voted to close public hearing and move to discussion and possible vote for this evening. Before you is a copy of the draft decision containing findings as well as conditions and four areas where I believe the applicant has sought a waiver. In each instance for the waivers, it was recommended by Fussin' O'Neil, the town's peer review engineers, that the waivers be granted. If it pleases the board and the chairman, I can go into the findings as well as the conditions. They're on the screen over my shoulder, and the same copy is in front of each member.
All right. Yes, please, Steven, go ahead.
All right, sir. Noting that this is for discussion and vote this evening, so if -- I know Mrs. Bogart particularly is very good about making sure my punctuation and spelling is on point. I'm going to lean on that and rely on you guys.
Don't hate, don't hate.
I'm not hating. No, no, I mean, there's two Rs in Carver. I know that now. All right, folks. At its meeting of March 26, 2019, of course, this is very much speculative, presuming that the board votes this way. The planning board voted to approve the site plan review application and special permit submitted by Cranberry Point Energy Storage/Sovereign Energy Storage to construct a lithium-ion battery energy storage system, or parenthetically, a BESs, with a storage capacity of 150 megawatts located at 31R Main Street, as shown on the plan entitled Cranberry Point Energy Storage System Project, prepared by AECOM, based in Chelmsford, Mass., dated January 17, 2019, and revised March 7, 2019, with the following findings. Each of these findings were discussed in some way or another in front of this board. Staff took liberties to expound upon this so that it could help round out the board's understanding as well as any member of the public. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts Energy Storage Initiative aims to make the Commonwealth a national leader in the emerging energy market, storage market. The Baker Administration launched ESI in May 2015 with the goal of advancing the energy storage segment in Massachusetts' clean energy industry by: One, attracting, supporting, and promoting storage companies in Massachusetts. Two, accelerating the development of early commercial storage technologies. Three, expanding markets for storage technologies and valuing storage benefits to clean energy integration, grid reliability, system-wide efficiency, and peak demand reduction. Four, recommending the developing policies, regulations, and programs that help achieve those objectives. This is from the state's ESI website. An Act relative to Energy Diversity, Chapter 188 of the Acts of 2016 states that the Department of Energy Resources, D-O-E-R, shall adopt targets to achieve the state's energy storage goals. D-O-E-R conducted extensive research, hosted public hearings, solicited comments from stakeholders and industry leaders. D-O-E-R has determined that the appropriate next step for the Commonwealth is the adoption of an aspirational 200-megawatt-hour energy storage target for electric distribution companies to procure viable and cost-effective energy storage systems to be achieved by January 1, 2020. The D-O-E-R's State of Charge report, released in September 2016, identified over 800 million in system benefits to Massachusetts ratepayers by 2050. Since its release, D-O-E-R has implemented many of the report's recommendations to promote energy storage in the Commonwealth, including incentivizing pairing energy storage with solar, authorizing the pairing of energy storage technologies with the largest procurement of clean energy and offshore wind energy generation, continued energy storage grant opportunities through the Commonwealth -- excuse me, through the Community Clean Energy Resiliency Initiative, and funding energy storage projects through the Peak Demand Reduction Grant Program. ANL is a multinational energy company and one of the world's leading integrated electricity and gas operators. ANL has a presence in 35 countries across five continents and generates energy with a capacity in excess of 89 gigawatts. Approximately 43 gigawatts is provided by wind farms, hydroelectric, geothermal, solar, and biomass power plants. ANL distributes energy to 73 million customers around the world. ANL Green Power North America Inc., or EGPNA, inaugurated their North American headquarters in January 2017 in Andover, Massachusetts. EGPNA is a leading owner and operator of renewable energy plants in North America with projects operating and under development in 23 U.S. states and two provinces in Canada. EGPNA first entered the U.S. market in 2000 with the acquisition of approximately 300 megawatts of hydropower, including two hydropower plants in Lowell, Mass. and Lawrence, Mass. Since then, the company has increased its capacity to more than 3,000 megawatts nationwide. According to the State of Charge report from the state, the electricity market currently only has storage capacity for 1% of daily electricity consumption in Massachusetts. Other commodities such as food, water, gasoline, oil, and natural gas have an average storage capacity of 10% of daily consumption. Without storage, electricity needs to be produced, delivered, and consumed nearly instantaneously for the grid to maintain balance. According to ISO New England, hourly load data over the 8%, or $680 million, of Massachusetts' ratepayers' annual spend on electricity. The top 10% hours accounted for 40% of annual electricity spend, over $3 billion. Energy storage is the only technology that can use energy generated during low-cost off-peak periods to serve load during expensive peak periods. According to ISO New England, the New England region is losing traditional energy generators. More than 5,200 megawatts of oil, coal, and nuclear power plants will retire by 2022. An additional 5,000 megawatts of coal and oil-fired generation is expected or anticipated to be retired shortly thereafter. The battery energy storage system will contain lithium-ion batteries. The contents of the batteries include nickel, manganese, and cobalt. The underlying zoning is residential agricultural. In 2018, the annual town meeting approved battery energy storage systems as in allowed use in all zoning districts throughout the community. The applicant, Cranberry Point Energy Storage and Sovereign Energy Storage, is proposing 186,436 square feet of new development located adjacent to the Eversource substation. 46,294 square feet will be rendered impermeable. On January 16, 2019, the planning board visited the site to observe current conditions and understand the site layout. The property is undeveloped and contains unimproved roads to access a cell tower and cranberry bogs to the south. The area is primarily located in a wooded portion of the property and is bounded to the north by transmission and distribution lines and the Eversource substation; to the west by transmission lines and distribution lines; to the south and east by wetlands. AECOM delineated wetlands' boundaries on January 25, 2018. The planning board is in receipt of the WPA Form 5 Order of Conditions dated February 6, 2019, provided by the Carver Conservation Agency, identifying areas where work is proposed within 100 feet of a wetland, but in no instance does work appear to be conducted within 65 feet of a wetland. The planning board is in receipt of a memo from the Carver Fire Department dated December 10, 2018, in which the CFD attests that the site access is adequate. CFD memo requests training and an emergency response plan to be developed with CFD input and approval. The planning board is in receipt of a memo from Fussin' O'Neil, acting as the board's peer review engineers. Fussin' O'Neil's review engineers cite several areas where the applicant is seeking waivers and relief from zoning bylaw requirements. In all instances, Fussin' O'Neil recommends approval of waivers. The applicant has pledged to donate funds to be retained in the administrative control of the town to assist with reforestation efforts and landscaping intended to beautify public rights of way located in the immediate vicinity of the project. Additional funds will be donated by the applicant to assist abutters with a landscaping plan to be implemented on the abutting property for the purpose of screening the abutting property. The applicant received and responded to written questions presented by the applicant to the planning board members -- excuse me, to the applicant by the planning board members in a memo dated February 11, 2019. The planning board discussed the questions and answers presented during a regular meeting of the board on March 12, 2019. The planning board's public hearing for the above referenced plan was held pursuant to sections 2230, Use Regulations, 3100, Site Plan Review, and 5300, Special Permits of the Carver Zoning Bylaws. The board finds that the benefits of the proposed use outweighs the deterrence, any detrimental impacts of the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site pursuant to sections 3100 and 5300 and the specific criteria found therein. Mr. Chairman, the findings conclude with the board voting X to X to approve or deny the site plan and special permit with the following conditions. Unless there are any questions about the findings, I can proceed to the conditions.
Question on two dates. I think you said on the second, on page two, third paragraph, "North American Headquarters" in -- you said January 2017. Mine says March.
It is March. If I said January, please forgive me. That is certainly intended to be March.
Okay. And then the last line on that page two, wetland boundaries on, I think you said January, again, and mine says July.
Yeah, it is July. I have the -- thank you again for -- I don't -- why I was focusing on January.
All right.
But thank you. Any other comments, questions from the board? All right. Moving along to the conditions. Condition one, prior to the issuance of an electrical permit, the applicant shall develop an emergency response plan, ERP, with input and approval from the Carver Fire Department. The ERP will include best practices for fire suppression, professional development and training for Carver Fire Department personnel, specialized equipment and/or any apparatus that may be necessary to mitigate fire hazard on-site. The ERP will include the methods for collection, testing, and disposal of water used to suppress a fire that comes into contact with a lithium-ion cells. Condition two, the ERP will include the contact information for two responsible site managers. Three, prior to the facility going online, funding shall be provided by the applicant directed towards emergency equipment and training to help mitigate any potential hazards. These funds will be directed towards the purchase of smaller emergency fire vehicles[774.56][774.56]/ necessary fire equipment specifically to assist the town in mitigating fire hazards, accessing, rescuing, and removing people in danger in the remote areas of the site that do not meet access standards. The funding amount and mechanism for needed emergency equipment utilized by the fire department will be finalized by the town administrator. The BES -- number four, the BESs shall be installed in accordance with Mass. 527 CMR 1.00, Chapter 52, stationary storage battery systems. This includes, but is not limited to -- I'm checking on you to make sure you're telling -- 52.3.10, an approved supervised smoke-detection fire alarm system, 52.3.2, a thermal runaway system, and 52.3.7, a temperature maintained operating environment. Number five, a local disconnect shall be installed. Six, all-access roads shall be constructed on an all-weather surface 12 feet wide and be cleared of obstructions on both sides by at least two feet. The vertical clearance shall be a minimum of 16 feet. All gated access points should have the ability to accommodate a CFD-supplied padlock or a Supra key safe, which must be installed at the expense of the developer. Specifications and ordering information for the Supra box will be provided by CFD upon request. Seven, the applicant shall submit and maintain ground fuels, manicuring and maintenance schedule. Manicuring of ground fuels should occur twice per year, at a minimum during the growing season. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall inform the planning administrator and Carver Fire Department which manufacturer has been selected to provide the technology for the development. Number nine, components of the Carver Public Safety Radio System is located adjacent to the project's site. The applicant shall provide to CFD evidence that the BESs will not create radio interference with this mission-critical infrastructure. Number 10, the design of the fire suppression system shall be in accordance with all applicable codes and requirements, including NFPA 70, NFPA 72, NFPA 855, Mass. 527 CMR 1.00, and UL 9540. These systems shall be approved by the Carver Fire Department. Number 11, the site shall be screened with a vegetative barrier or fencing on all sides of the project's site in order to adequately prevent abutters from reasonably being visibly impacted by the development site. 12, prior to the issuance of a building permit, a true copy of the recorded decision as registered at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds shall be submitted to the board. 13, the project must be constructed as approved in the site plan. Any other revisions will require approval from the board as a modification of this decision. 14, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit site signage information including details and locations. 15, applicant must submit updated operations and maintenance plan, including revisions outlined in the memo provided by Fussin' O'Neil dated March 8, 2019. 16, applicant must submit updated SWIP, including revisions outlined in the Fussin' O'Neil's memo dated March 8, 2019. 17, applicant shall submit estimate of construction costs to the planning administrator. 18, prior to the issuance of an electrical permit, the applicant shall provide the board with a decommissioning bond and the amount to be negotiated by town administrator to run with the life of the project. 19, prior to the issuance of an electrical permit, applicant will submit photometric analysis showing locations, heights, orientation, color, and type of lighting. The applicant -- number 20, the applicant is responsible for the proper operation and maintenance of the site. During construction, sedimentation and erosion controls shall be installed, repaired, and supplemented as needed. Dust control is required during construction, and the roadway apron is to be kept swept and clear of any dust, dirt, or debris. 21, any outstanding balance of the review and inspections deposit account shall be paid prior to the issuance of a certificate of use and occupancy. Lastly, we have our waivers. Any questions about the conditions?
I have a couple, but I'll wait till you go through them.
Excellent. The waivers, as requested by the applicant and recommended for approval by the planning staff and Fussin' O'Neil, include: number one, applicant requests a waiver for providing open space. Number two, applicant requests a waiver for designating permanent parking, loading areas, and walkways. Number three, the applicant requests a waiver for providing on-site landscaping. And number four, applicant requests a waiver for providing traffic plan. However, a waiver does not apply to the trip generation during construction. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that is the draft decision as presented before you, compiled with input from the public as well as members of the board and other town departments, including the DPW, Carver Fire Department, Building Commissioner, Department of Health, Conservation Agency, as well as some input from members of the RDA.
Okay. Any of the board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Steven. Condition number three, I'd like to add to the last sentence and approved by the planning board. This special permit is through the planning board, so we need to approve that funding amount. I don't have a problem with the town administrator negotiating that and the fire department, but I want us to be the final say on that.
Can I jump in on that one? I would -- number three, I would ask that we remove the word "smaller" from the third line, giving the fire department the opportunity to decide on what size emergency fire vehicles they would need during the development of the emergency response plan. By approving it saying it's smaller, that limits what they may need down the road.
So you just want to strike "smaller"?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that. Number five needs to be a little bit more clearer. Local disconnect shall be installed. What type of disconnect was that?
That was provided to us by the Carver Fire Department. I see Jesse Boils here. I don't know if Jesse wants to speak more to that, if it's okay with the board.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Good evening, folks. Jesse Boyle, Carver Fire Department, Mr. Sinclair. So what we've seen on these existing projects, initially, a lot of these comments were written for the proposal of the shipping container, if you will. And so what we were looking at at that perspective was to have the disconnect mounted on every shipping container. Now, as we've noted several times in these comments, we haven't yet been made aware of the exact manufacturer of the products, and it seems that the Tesla system would have a different disconnect system than the shipping container model would.
So through you, Mr. Chair. Chief, you're talking about electrical disconnecting means.
Correct.
I just want that to be clarified, electrical disconnecting means.
Additionally, we've cited several times NFPA 70, which is a national electric code, which will also call for disconnects. So it's really just a parallel.
I just wanted to be clearer in the conditions.
Okay, understood. Also, Mr. Chairman, through you. Steven, we had additionally submitted some amended comments from the fire department, including the hiring of a fire protection engineer, which I know we've had this discussion with Sovereign so far. I didn't hear those in the conditions, and I certainly think that that needs to be part of the conditions of this project.
The last memo I have from you, Jesse, is with regard to the ERP. Do you recall roughly when?
I have it in front of me. It's January 16.
January 16, excellent. And if you have the language, I'll be very glad to include that.
I do. Yep. I actually have a copy here for you. I have two copies. They both have notes on them, but if you want.
I'd say we just add the language.
Mr. Chairman, if it pleases you, Jesse, would you would like to read it into the record presently?
Indeed. So I have this as my comment number 15. Due to the size and the scope of the proposed project, we recommend that the developer hire a licensed fire protection engineer to act as the Assistant Deputy Fire Chief's Assistant in review of the project for all applicable code compliance and related fire safety considerations. The fire protection engineer shall recommend the approval or disapproval of the design and installation of both passive and active fire protection systems. These systems include sprinkler systems, fire alarm systems, and fire protection water supplies. Additionally, product containment runoff protection shall be reviewed by the fire protection engineer. The fire protection engineer shall provide a letter of certification that the project has met all applicable codes as required prior to the fire department signing the occupancy permit.
Excellent.
So you'll give us, Steven, a copy of that?
Sure. Just regarding the notes on it, irrelevant. Any further questions?
No, just thanks, Chief, for all your help.
Sure thing, no problem. Just doing my job.
Thank you.
Item number 18.
One second, Mr. Sinclair.
So instantly before our eyes, that information is added.
Technology's amazing. Thank goodness there's a battery in this computer, though. All right, Mr. Sinclair, you had something else to add?
Item number 18, I'd like to insert into last paragraph the same phrase, "and approved by the planning board."
That was number eight.
That is, number 18, prior to the issuance of electrical permit, the applicant shall provide to the board a decommission bond and the amount to be negotiated by the town administrator to run with the life of the project, and approved by the planning board. So we're just adding "and approved by the planning board."
And that was number 19, to be clear, right?
Okay. Mine was 18, but.
Oh, because I just added a new condition for Jesse, so it just realigned them.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, particularly on that item, because that really falls under your permit, I think town council may have just added that to put that under the town administrator, but I've never really been involved in negotiating that. You've done that with all the other solar projects. So I mean, I don't see a need to change precedent on that. Normally, when it does come to departments in negotiating their operations pieces like the fire apparatus, that's normally where the administration's involved in that because we oversee the fire where the boards don't. Once you approve the site, the site's approved. And that should -- and so I guess what I'm saying is when you look at the two, is really this one should be under the planning board exclusively. The other one with the fire department is an operational issue that always gets done with the fire department or any of the departments that's there. So I'm just throwing that out. Again, I don't need to be involved in approving your performance bond, taking it down.
Mr. Chair, through you, I welcome your expertise on negotiations. You've done a great job in the past with the negotiations with the applicants. I just want to make sure that as we're approving a special permit for this project, that we have the final say on what it looks like. Otherwise, we're just writing a blank check. But I welcome the town administrator's expertise on doing that, absolutely.
But I'm saying you can do it.
You're out of your mind.
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, through you. Steven, I did just email you that amended comments.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Chairman? Just a procedural question. Yes, go ahead.
Lawrence, one of our co-councilmen for the petition, I just want the record to reflect that the ultimate setting of all of the meetings has been postponed.
Yes, I have. Yes, I have.
Anything else? That's all I had.
Number 19, I'd like to add the language that Will has added, that the photometric analysis also be vetted and approved by us, because my question would be if it's submitted, what if it's going to light up like Times Square or Las Vegas? I'd like that to come before us so we can see it, since it's not being given to you.
I thought we weren't going to go with the photometric plan for this, because I felt that a photometric plan was more appropriate for parking area or people where people are traveling. It does say in the bylaw that, in this particular case, in our solar applications, that the lights will be shielded. I have it right here. Says lighting for -- this is going under the LSG/MSPI, shall be consistent with local, state, and federal law. Lighting of other parts of the installation, such as a pertinent structure, shall be limited to that required for safety and operational purposes, and shall be shielded to eliminate glare from abutting properties, and shall be directed downward, and shall incorporate cutoff fixtures to reduce light pollution. So, I mean, those are the type of fixtures we use. I just don't think a photometric plan is necessary for this. And we did discuss that at the last meeting, that we were going to -- they'll have to put shields on those lights so they're directed downward. And there aren't any houses for -- it had to be 1,000 feet or more away. So it's not the -- if the lights are shielded, they won't be -- they shouldn't be shining directly on anybody's property or homes. The light itself will be directed downward.
In prior meetings, I've cited that the applicant applied for a jurisdiction review from the Mass. Energy Facility Siting Board, and the Siting Board had put out kind of a call for information. call for information, for comments. And then they, since the last meeting, I found that the applicant has responded to the request for information from the Siting Board, and it's actually an interesting read. It's this. The applicant gave all of this back to the state, and it was really an interesting read. I learned a lot. It also raised some questions in my mind, very thorough. Good job, Mr. Garfield and team. But in it, the state did ask about lighting. They raised lighting concerns, and the applicant stated on a reading from this, "As one of the conditions of the special permit, an approved lighting plan with a photometric analysis will be required before a building permit will be issued." So they've told the state that they'll be giving us the analysis. I don't see why we shouldn't.
I mean, if we could, I guess we could condition it that with planning board approval, if we could see the light fixtures and the type of shield that they're going to have around the light to cast the light downward, I suppose that could be a condition. Photometric plan of the whole property isn't required. I wouldn't think would be required. But we can have, we could condition it so that we could see what a light fixture throws out.
Just a cut sheet?
Yeah, yeah. I think that would be sufficient.
Is the language in number 20 acceptable? 20 over my shoulder. I believe it's number 19 in your packet.
I think that, I think that covers it, yeah.
Concern on number 11, says it adequately prevents abutters from being reasonably impacted. Those on Atwood who would see the project may not be direct abutters. So I have a concern using the term "abutters."
Well, our bylaw does state that it's just the butters that we need to be concerned with, or anything 600 feet from the site. And those are much further away than 600 feet. I think we did state at the beginning, I mean, we've gone through this, we did talk about if necessary, that first, we have to see exactly what the site's going to look like, because we have 30 feet of trees between the easement and where these containers are going to go. So we do have some screening there, and we are also going to have a fence there. And it really has to be seen after construction if this is, is going to affect anybody. Although, these people are much further away than 600 feet. But I think we discussed that at our last meeting, and there was something here. I mean, we did have money set aside for trees, money that was donated. And we did discuss something about if anybody had a problem, that the town department could take a look and then plant some trees along the property line. But I think first, we have to see what's necessary out there.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think that that covers it. That condition there.
That is, that is one of the findings.
One of the findings.
It is one of the findings, as well as one of the conditions, of course, but this was discussed at our last meeting, and I believe it was Alex who contributed an additional $10,000 to the conversation in the event that someone is visually impacted.
Can we put that dollar amount in there instead of additional funds? Because like, Mr. Chair, what you were saying we discussed last time, that's not specified in this permit approval. And my understanding is that things should be in here to be adhered to. So what may have been said, or discussed, or proposed at a meeting may not necessarily be enforced unless it's in here. So I think we need to be specific, and I'm very leery of the term "abutter," because the people on Atwood are not direct abutters. And they are, they are not more than 600 or so feet, like you were saying. When we looked at the map, the circular map, when it said they were 1,000, the project was 1,000 feet from a residence, that was from the center of the project site, not from the edge. And going back to the applicant's response to the state, it said although the residences within, the residences are within 400 to 500 feet of the project. So they are closer than that. And section 3200 of our zoning bylaws says, "The landscaping will preserve or improve the visual environmental character of Carver as generally viewed from residential or publicly accessible locations, and to offer property owners protection against diminut-
Diminutif-
Yeah, well, it's diminut-, yeah, but it says "shun" in there, of property values due to adjacent non-residential use. So we are to protect the residences. It doesn't specify a distance, and the people on Atwood are not abutters. So having the "abutter" language in there does not offer them protection. And just having the term "additional funds" down the road, they could say it was $5. It's just not specific enough. It's not, it's not a landscape.
I think, I think we did talk about planting trees and what would be necessary to screen that one person, if necessary. But I still disagree that if they're not, if they're not in a butter, then they don't have to be screened. And yet, we still don't know what we're going to screen. So, because there might be screening there already. So I, and I don't, I mean, we do have money that's been donated to a tree fund, but that's not for this project. We've had other projects, and other people have donated to the tree fund, too. But that's, money is also for other places in town that may need that money, too. So I think that there should be enough money, if necessary, that they should be able to plant trees on this one particular house lot, if necessary. And we don't really know if that's going to be necessary or not. But we certainly do have enough money to do that. I don't know, I didn't want to go on all night. Does anybody else feel that this needs to be changed?
I'm pretty good with the language.
I'm with the language of this, myself.
All right, so we'll just go on, then. Anything else?
I have other stuff that I've learned since the last meeting. First of all, Mr. Garfield, I want to thank you, because throughout this process, you have been nothing but respectful to the board, in the boardroom and on the site visits, and it has not gone unnoticed. So I thank you for the respect that you've shown us. Like I said, since the last meeting, I found the response to the Siting Facilities Board, some of the questions that the state posed to the applicant were similar to the ones that I've asked, which is encouraging, because it shows that we're on the right path. There were a lot of other questions asked and information given, which tells me that there's a lot of stuff to know that we don't know. One of the things brought up in here that I don't think we talked about was the actual construction of the facility. How long will it take?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, we've closed the public hearing, correct?
Yes.
So it's not right to be hearing other testimony about new information?
This is discussion.
But the public hearing's been closed, you're bringing up new information.
I was told last time, the public hearing only means you can't take testimony from the public, but that we could still discuss it. I did ask that.
Well, we did.
I was, I was told that it was just no bringing in new information from the public.
Well, we have closed the public hearing, so, yeah, we're just here tonight to discuss what we have before us for the conditions.
Mr. Chairman, through you, if any member is interested in contributing to the conditions that are before us, then we can certainly have that kind of a discussion. We cannot and probably should not be discussing new information as we have closed the public hearing. So if it's not, if it's not a proposed condition, I don't know that we should be discussing this. Are you proposing a condition?
Yes, I will get to it. We didn't discuss construction, so I don't know how long the project's going to take from day one till completion, so we've not discussed how many vehicle trips will occur per day. We should consider conditioning how many truck trips. We don't know where they're going to come from.
Vava four.
The days and times the construction will be, setting limits on that. In this document, they told the state they anticipate the permit saying the construction times would be between 7:00 and 4:30. It didn't discuss days and times. This said that they would address any noise from nearby residences and public ways during construction. We didn't discuss that, and they told the board that would be part of the special permit process. We jumped right ahead to the final product. So we need to condition some stuff about the construction process.
So what do you?
I mean, we didn't discuss that at all.
What are your proposals? We have the, we have the, we have the permit open.
Well, I think the hours of construction could be as they told the state they anticipated, 7:00 to 4:30 PM.
So I just need some clarification. Through you, Mr. Chair, the gen, the state document that you found is what you're going to use based on adding conditions or discussion points?
I learned information while reading this. That was a point that we had never-
Was that after the, the public hearing was closed?
They put out this document, it's dated March 12th, so yes, I did not find it until after the public hearing.
So this, this is my concern, I guess just for clarification. It's information that you've researched, that you have, that you want to condition a project on, but we've closed the public hearing on information? So the, so the applicant doesn't have the ability to receive that information and comment on it, because the public hearing was closed by this board?
So can we reopen the public hearing?
On what grounds?
The fact that they issued this 300-page document-
When you say "they."
The applicant. The state put forth a lot of questions to the applicant as part of this petition between the Energy Facility Siting Board. The applicant has now responded to the inquiries from the state. And in going through this, the state raised a lot of good points about the project, giving information about it, but they raised the issue of construction, traffic, and, and other things. This, this document was not available to us before the last meeting.
Right, so that, so this board, and all the information that this board had, to make a decision to close the public hearing, it was the will of this board to do that, based on the information that was provided to this board in the public hearing process?
Mm-hmm.
It's like, now that you've found new information on a project that might have been applied for, information that were applied on a state permit, you want to apply that to this project, but the, but the public hearings already have been closed.
Is there no kind of administrative way to reopen this and add it in? It's very relevant, important information. We really shouldn't ignore it. This is so new to town, I don't know why we would discount this.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think at the last meeting, when we had town council here, is town council was trying to advise the board is that each board has a box that has to work within the rules and the regulations of those box. And that's to be fair and open and transparent with all parties and with all applicants, so everybody's treated fairly, following the rules the town meeting has adopted through the bylaws that we have for implementing zoning regulations. So that's, that's a very important piece, and I think that's what Mr. Sinclair is getting to. You have in front of you the public record that's been released, and that's what you're here to opine on. Anything that's been discussed and any documents that were submitted, that's the box that you have to look at. There will be multiple permits that, whether it's this battery group or any other project in front of you, has to go through different stages. And whether that's a MEPA process, whether that's something with the DPU, whether that's something with the state fire marshal, there's other processes that these other groups have four boxes to do, and that's their job. And there's always going to be new information coming, but the, I guess the point is, is that the board has determined they had enough information at the last meeting to close the hearing, and you're looking to discuss what documents, or what restrictions, or what covenants that you're going to put on there. And to take things out of sequence or outside the box is where the town potentially can get into liability. And that's what we've been trying to advise, and I know that you're going to have a meeting with town council to go over all that, because there's been some question as to the legality of some of the questions that have been answered, and we want to make sure that no one inadvertently, because of lack of knowledge, gets the town in trouble, is that, all's I'm advising is that, you know, I think it's one of your members saying, is you have the four boxes, I mean, the four corners of the project and your scope, that town council talked about at the last meeting, and anything that's new that you're adding is, is not something that's on the public record. It's not something that was here. It's not something that you were debating. And again, there are important permits that everyone's going to have to get in the future for any project, and they have to follow the rules of that regulation that's there. So I, I think that's what you're trying to get to, Mr. Sinclair.
In a roundabout way, yeah. Because that was what I, what I got from the video from the last meeting, what town council was trying to give us. That's what I got. So it's basically what I'm saying is that we can't go back outside and get more information to try to condition some without applying a whole new permit or what have you, because we've already closed the public hearing.
And we're not saying that those things aren't important, because they are. But that's under the state permit process, and if there, if there's certain restrictions that they're agreeing to on the state permit process, well, then the town benefits from those, because the town can only look at it for what's in its piece. And I think, as you're saying, is you have your butters to deal with, and that's what your requirement is. Anything else outside of the butters, the butters to the butters, whatever that definition is, is not part of what the applicant has to respond to. And to ask things outside of that scope, again, it's not within the four corners, the jurisdiction. And again, I'm just, I want to keep the town out of trouble. That's all I'm just trying to do, and, you know, I'm following town council's advice. They gave it to you at the last meeting. I know they've been trying to ask to do more training, and hopefully that'll be adhered to in the future. Thank you.
Well, I'm not trying to get the town in trouble either, but in my opinion, it, I don't understand how there's no way for us to reopen the hearing or find a way to present more information that's pertinent to this project. The state asking about the hours, the landscaping, the state was asking questions, and the applicant repeatedly stated that will be part of the special permit process, that will be part of the conditions. We haven't addressed those, and early on in the public hearing process, Mr. Garfield had said, because this is new, he would expect a long list of conditions. We're learning as we go. We said before the battery storage, I remember, Mr. Chair, you saying, "We're learning as we go, because this is new." So in my opinion, it's difficult to swallow that we have new information before us, and for some reason, we're not allowed to-
For some reason.
-consider it.
Well, unfortunately, we're not. Legally, by law, we can't do that. So as was explained, you know, generally, we set hours and stuff like that on some projects, but really, in this area here, it's, it's remote anyway. It's not near any dwellings. It's more out in Creamery Bog area, so.
Mr. Chair, through you, it's one of the waivers that they requested. The applicant requests a waiver to provide a, excuse me, traffic plan. A waiver does not apply to the trip generation during construction.
Okay, that takes care of that. What else did you have? I mean, we have to move on.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't discuss that? Do you have anything that, that we have discussed that you would like to see added or amended?
But for the record, I'm disappointed that none of us thought to talk about the construction of the project. That's a big part of it. So we don't really know anything about the construction, and that's disappointing, that we didn't think to ask. Other things that the state had brought up that I know I had asked before was to have the computer modeled, computer rendering, that I believe it was Alex said at the last meeting, he could have it in four to six weeks. At this point, it would have been two to four. At this point, it would have been two to four. I think that would have answered a lot of our questions and concerns and things that would have been conditioned, like the screening and what it would look like. To have that rendering would, would answer a lot of these concerns. In my opinion, it would have been a very valuable thing to have. And it's disappointing that we can't get it. I was not under the impression that we couldn't discuss the project in full after a public hearing.
Yeah, I think we, we talked about this before. They did say it was going to take four to six weeks to come up with the rendering. It's not required by the bylaw. The rendering is sort of generic anyway. I don't know exactly what detail it would show, but it is not required. I, and it would have come after we had, you know, come to this point anyway. So it would have been, it wouldn't have been, it would have been useless to the, for us tonight to, to go through the conditions, because we wouldn't have had it. So, and we did discuss, so we, we're not going to have, it's, it's just not required. So, yeah, I mean, and like they said, it, it is a generic thing. It doesn't show all the trees or everything. It, it might show the project, but I, and I don't know how they would come up with something like that, but that's not required in our bylaws.
Well, they told the state they'd come up with before and after visualizations of the facility from representative surrounding areas. So they plan to supply that to the state. I'm confused when you keep referencing it's not in our bylaw. We don't have a bylaw specific to battery energy storage facilities.
Well, this is, this is under the, the ground-mounted solar facility bylaw that we have. That's what we're, we're doing this as.
But it doesn't officially fall under that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we're here to discuss and possibly vote on the conditions. And it seems to me we're still trying to have a conversation about new and salient information that is not relevant to what we're here to discuss this evening.
So what do you have for us that, that, to add to the conditions that we've had, we've discussed?
Well, I, in my opinion, we could condition that they give us the rendering and then have the option to specify things. That could be a condition. We could condition the days and times of the construction. We could condition that once construction begins, any noise from nearby residences would be addressed. They had done a noise test. We could condition, the state had recommended they do a five-day noise test. We could condition that we get the results of that five-day noise test when it's available to address any potential issues and develop a compliance mechanism. There are a lot of things that we could condition. And I go back to the beginning when Mr. Garfield said he would expect a long list of conditions.
I don't know. Is there any other board members that are?
Mr. Chair.
Interested in? I, I don't want to act ignorant here, but is there any way that I can ask you to ask for a, a vote on this? Because based on the conditions that are before us and the conditions that have been addressed and the issues that have been addressed, it would be nice if we could go forward and make a motion based on what we've been working on and diligently been working on.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion on the floor.
Is that your motion, Kevin?
That is my motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to vote on the conditions as they are now with the amendments that we've had up until this time.
I believe that would be on a local disconnect shall be installed with the new language and also on 18 to add approved by the planning board, even though the town administrator said he was happy to let us do that.
I, I, point of clarification, I don't think I heard he was happy to do that.
And 19, not necessarily needing the phonometric analysis, but asking for the lights that would be shining down not to be set off to.
Just be a cut sheet, I guess. It's just be a cut sheet of the lights.
If that could be included. That would be my motion.
And this, this was the other. And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't recall, Mr. Robinson, if you captured condition three where it was added, that it shall be approved by the planning board.
I apologize.
No, that's quite right. You may, you may well have.
That was the first one that Will brought up.
Okay, perfect.
To include that. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, with those changes that Mr. Robinson cited.
And the deputy fire chiefs.
Yes, sir. And that became, that became condition 11 here. The applicant shall hire a fire protection engineer to act as the assistant deputy fire chief's assistant in reviewing and, in review of the project for applicable code compliance and related fire safety conditions, et cetera.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
In the conditions that you've presented to us, Stephen, does it address one of Fussin O'Neil's concerns from March 8th under plan set, when they say it's recommended that town include a condition that submission of final slab and footing details shall be included in the submission to the building official? Is that, those words are not included in the conditions you presented before us. Is it inferred somewhere in there? Because it was at the end of their memo.
Construction approval site plan.
It's a clear recommendation, being that it was just a recommendation. I, the building commissioner is part of our department, frankly. Building permits aren't issued until we have that conversation. If it makes the board feel better to have that particular recommendation in there.
What was this? Which one was this?
This is the March 8th memo, the final memo from Fussin O'Neil under the plan set. It says, number one, the A7 detail on, on sheet A7, provide details of concrete slabs, footings. It is recommended that the town include a condition that submission of final slab and footing details shall be included in the submission to the building official. I spoke to the building official. He was going to require that anyhow. It's, it's redundant, and in my opinion, it was unnecessary, but if it's the board's will, we can include that.
Okay. If it's already going to, if it's already going to be done, I, I think then that's good. If, if the building commissioner is already going to do that. Anything else? So we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
And, and tonight, Cara's voting for, because Jim isn't here tonight. So that's 4-4, one against. All right. So that'll, that'll do it for tonight, and thank you for, for coming here tonight and.
Thank you.
I know you'll be working with the, the planner and the, and the building commissioner and, and all these people. And I know that, you know, we, we always make sure that the, the neighbors and everybody's happy while the construction is being done out there. So, and I know that you'll work with the, the town planner on that. Okay. But this is going to take a long time to do. It's, it's going to, it's years away yet and, and years in, in doing.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen. Thanks, Will. I owe you one. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
That was good.
That was good.
If it wasn't him, it was going to be me.
Yeah. All right. The next, we have a public hearing continued on the application of David Mulcahy, 1929 Development LLC of Kingston requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2230 and 3100 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 157 North Main Street on Assessors Map 24 lot 4A in Carver, Mass.
Mr. Chairman, before we open the hearing for this particular project site, we do have a request from the applicant to continue. Received that this afternoon from the, the applicant's lawyer and engineer.
Mr. Chair, through you, just a question for clarifications. How many times have we continued this application?
I believe four or five, but in each instance, it was part and parcel because we haven't had a full board, correct?
Okay.
That's typically a courtesy that we extend to any applicant when we are absent a full board. We make them aware of it, and typically in the past, we have entertained that.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for David Mulcahy, 120, 1929 Development LLC to, what's that next name?
Mr. Chairman and members, our next scheduled hearing date is April 23rd at 7:00.
To April 23rd.
Not April 9th.
I'll second.
So are you going to be here April 23rd?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay. Because I know you did have some time that you weren't going to be here. All right. So.
You make it sound leisurely, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The state is paying for us.
All right. So that was 4-4. Okay. And the next, we have an application of RPB, RPBP LLC requesting a definitive subdivision plan pursuant to the Carver rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land for property located on Spring Street. And that is going to be.
Continued also, Mr. Chairman, we have a request from the applicant, but furthermore, it's, it's not yet fully been vetted by Fussin O'Neil. We just received their memo earlier today. They also have yet to appear before CONCOM. Just given some of the wetlands delineation issues out there, I thought it would be more meaningful for us to take up, more meaningful for us to take up the action when we have some kind of a determination from the CONCOM.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for RPBP LLC to 423.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We go on to planning board member notes. Anybody have anything that they want to say tonight?
I do not. I'm good.
A woman reached out on social media and said that none of the minutes from our 2019 meetings are up, and I know we've tabled them and addressed them in the future, but are there any that are ready to be seen by the public? And how long will that take? She said none of them are on the website.
I thank you for bringing that to my attention. I, I wasn't aware of that. In fact, I, I know that we've, we've done the yeoman's work of revamping our website and combining the planning board with the planning office, so that helps cut down on some of the confusion that folks sometimes experience trying to understand the difference or the disconnect between the two. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I will investigate that, and I will get as many as has been approved up on the website within the week.
Can I tell her anything? What should I tell her and imply? She asked if I could follow up on it and then.
If she, if she would like copies of the minutes in the interim, have her reach out to me. I'd be very glad to make sure that she receives those. If you want me to send them to you and you can maintain that relationship, I'll be glad to do that as well.
Okay. That's it.
Planning director notes.
None, sir. Thank you all so much for the hard work, the time, and the exhaustive hours that you all spend on these, these projects. We couldn't do it without you.
All right. Thank you. And then we, now we have the, we'll take one at a time. March, the minutes for approval of, we have first, the March 12th, 2019.
Mr. Chair, because we were given all of these now, I've not had a chance to read them, and there's three sets, and they're long. So I would make a motion to table these until next time to give us all a chance to thoroughly read them.
Has anybody else had a chance to read the, the notes yet? Oh, I don't have any problems with that. Is that all right with everybody?
Make a motion to table them all.
And our next meeting will be.
That was a motion. We need a second.
Oh, we have a motion. Okay. You have a second?
I'll second that.
So you have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And our next meeting date will be, let's wait for, see.
April 23rd. Yep.
4/23?
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Who seconded that?
We would not have one the second Tuesday.
I did.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Our next meeting is 4/23?
4/23. Right. You guys can meet without me on the 9th, but.
Is there a reason why it's 4/23?
We'll meet the, the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, typically. And normally, we would meet, I think, on the 9th. Is that right? And so I will be out of town on that day.
And that's why.
So it's, it's the board's will if you want to meet without me.
No, no, no. I just want to.
Someone's going to have to do the legwork.
That seemed like an awful long time. That's all.
You can't do the legwork. You have no leg.
I have to come in.
Yeah. All right. So that, that will be our next meeting date. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
And good night, everyone.